Okay, good morning. The meeting of the Jefferson County Board will now come to order. The clerk has already noted those who are here in person. For those appearing by telephone, would you please announce your presence? For those appearing by telephone, would you please announce your presence?
I know Augie and Dick are on there. Anyone else?
Augie, Dick? All right. Took care of it. We lost a couple people.
That's the wrong way to say it.
Yeah, that sounds correct.
Full of enough germs since now to keep the virus going down?
My sister was going, she's in, I don't know, my family stuff. She was going into the grocery store and she said, "All these people were coming out with toilet paper and stuff."
Yeah?
In shopping cans. And one guy comes out and he's got those six packs of Guinness cans.
Yeah.
And ramen noodles. And she said, "Why don't you get something you need?" And he said, "But this is a cure."
This'll be a good dry run for this technology. When we end, this is not the technology we use. That makes you feel better?
What year was that?
I think 2000 or 2002 was just the last year.
Eighteen seventy.
Is that, did you get that on the line?
I suppose it's just the May, our May or old day.
Jim Bowden? Jim, good morning.
Okay, so I got Jim, Augie, and Dick. Anyone else on the line?
Kirk's on the line.
Kirk's on the line.
All right, we had to switch these phones. For some reason, our main line's not working, so bear with us.
Okay, thank you. And for those on the phone, if you want to join the discussion, please announce your name, and the chair will recognize you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the meeting's been...
Dick Scholz?
Good morning, Dick. Laura Payne is here as well. Thank you. Anyone else?
Augie, Dave.
Augie, thank you. Jim, thank you. All right, I think we have everybody recorded at the moment. So roll call has been completed. Are we in compliance with open meeting law? We are, Mr. Chair. Next is approval of the agenda. Does anybody want the order altered in any way? And just going forward for everybody, because when we're doing these by telephone, I think we've all participated in phone conferences where somebody is rustling a piece of paper close to their phone and it sounds like there's a major war going on. So try to keep that in mind. Okay, next is public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to the county administrator with resolution ratification of emergency declaration. Mr. Waymire, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Jefferson County Emergency Management Ordinance Number 1987-24 is amended by Ordinance Number 2116, providing events of emergency occurs with Jefferson County at town and county board is unable to meet for the purposes of making a declaration, the following persons may declare emergency a county board. And whereas county board chair, and whereas the emergency management ordinance in Section 324, Parent 4, Parent B of the Wisconsin statute indicated if an emergency declaration is made by the county board chair, the board shall ratify or repeal such declaration as soon as the body can meet. And whereas an emergency, namely the COVID-19 pandemic, has impacted and will continue to impact Jefferson County, and whereas County Board Chair Jim Schrader issued an emergency declaration on March 13, 2020, following the World Health Organization designation of the COVID-19 pandemic, a public health emergency of international concern, Governor of the State of Wisconsin declaration of a state emergency, President Trump's declaration of a national emergency, and the United States Health and Human Services Secretary's declaration of public health emergency for the entire United States, which declaration is presently in effect. And whereas county administrators authorized to utilize contingency funds and fund balances as needed to maintain the continuing operations with oversight as needed by the finance committee, and whereas county administrators authorized to amend or suspend personnel policies in the best interest of the public and employee safety in continuing county operations. And whereas such emergency declaration may make Jefferson County eligible for emergency funds and will facilitate and expedite the use of various resources to protect persons from the impacts of the spread of COVID-19 while maintaining continuity of operations for Jefferson County. This declaration shall be in effect for 60 days. If the county board is unable to meet on May 12, 2020, this declaration will only continue until the next meeting of the county board. Now therefore be resolved by the county board ratifying the emergency declaration, which is enclosed in the packet and should be included in this resolution issued by County Board Chair Jim Schrader on March 13, 2020, which is presently in effect with the full power and effect as determined. I ask for movement of this resolution and ratification.
Moved by Supervisor Jankel, seconded by Supervisor Poulsen. If we could back up just a minute, we've already recorded, or Serena's already recorded, who's present in person and who's present by telephone. Could you please state for the record, Serena, how many members of the board are present this morning?
Sure. I have nineteen.
Nineteen present?
Eighteen present and five on the phone.
Eighteen present, which constitutes a quorum of the board, and then we have five on the phone. Is five, is that correct?
Teen, London, Payne, Moore, and Schultz.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to ratify the emergency declaration. Are there any questions about what this declaration does? Supervisor Nielan, please.
When I read this, so my understanding is this is for 60 days, extendable by 30 days, and that's it. But there's no, it's not further extendable the way I read this.
The way this language is set up is when the next time the county board can meet. So hypothetically, let's say we go to May and the county board can't meet, and then we hit June and the county board can't meet. It's the next availability of that county board. Now, potentially by that time, as we talk through the next resolution, that the remote attendance will be available so we can have remote attendance at a public meeting, so the county board can continue that declaration to see fit. But the initial goal is at least get this till June if possible with this declaration without having to meet if something happens.
So we'd have to meet or vote again for the, after June?
If you look at, it said before the, therefore, that last sentence, "If the county board is unable to meet on May 12, 2020, this declaration will continue until the next meeting of the county board."
Oh, I see the next meeting, so whenever that is. Okay, all right, gotcha.
Okay. Discussion on the ratification of the emergency declaration. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
The declaration is ratified. Next, resolution authorizing remote meetings. Mr. Waymire, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Resolution Number 201986, authorization for remote attendance. Whereas Jefferson County Emergency Management Ordinance Number 1987-24 is amended by Ordinance Number 2116, provides the event of emergency occurs within Jefferson County at a time when the county board is unable to meet, the purpose of making such a declaration, the following persons may declare a state emergency, a, the county board chair. And whereas an emergency, namely the COVID epidemic, has impacted, will continue to impact Jefferson County. And whereas Jefferson County Board Chair Jim Schrader issued an emergency declaration on March 13, 2020, as we cited already, whereas imperative that the governing bodies of the county have the ability to meet as required to maintain the operations of the county. And whereas the county administrator is authorized to develop a process, procedures, and capabilities to facilitate remote attendance at county meetings in compliance with all applicable laws, now therefore be resolved, the county board authorized the utilization of remote attendance at all county meetings held to facilitate transaction of county business with minimal barriers for participation of members of the board, commissions, committees, and facilitate the ability for public transparency. This will also be in effect until the declaration of emergency is ended. I ask for movement and passage of this resolution.
Moved by Supervisor Broglar, seconded by Supervisor Remnar. Any questions about the resolution on remote meetings? Supervisor Coats, please.
Would the passage of this allow the people on the phone today to vote? Because the next item needs twenty people to vote on.
Thank you, good question. With the next, would the people who are appearing by phone be allowed to vote upon passage of this resolution?
Could we vote to waive the rule? President here.
Second?
Who's president here? Could we vote to waive the rule with a simple majority?
We can't waive the rule. And I'm, again, we're talking through as quickly as we go. So part of this is now we have a declaration that allows me some certain authority, which includes the ability to, from a staffing perspective. And so potentially then at a future date for the next item is we can do a ratification vote so we can get that position filled with people. I think that might be the best way to do it, because at the time this was published, the remote attendance rules were not in effect. So I'd be very concerned about using remote attendance for purposes of an action I'm at this meeting right now.
But as a practical matter, Mr. Waymire, under the emergency authority, can move forward, and then later, when we have the ability to gain 20 votes, we'll ratify them. Does that answer your question satisfactorily?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions about the resolution? Mr. Waymire, please.
So this is really about the transparency, such technical capabilities, and what we're going to be trying to do. So over the weekend, we purchased a basically business package for Zoom, so we can have certain hosting capabilities, which also allow for a greater number of participation. And so our intent is if and when we hold meetings that we want public access to, so they don't have to come to a facility, as part of that notice process, instructions for that Zoom meeting itself will be made available to the public, so they may also participate to listen to the meeting. So that's our intent behind this, so it's not just the members of the committee, commissions, boards, but it's also notifications to the public, so they may participate in that fashion as well as we need to. As most of the board is aware, we are trying to review most of the meetings right now for those items that need specific action for meetings to take place versus some of those items that might be a longer-term policy as we see how long this goes. And those are meetings that we have canceled. So an example this week was HR committee met, because we had some specific action items that had to be taken care of. But then yesterday, land and water was supposed to meet. They had limited action items that needed to take place, so that meeting was canceled. So that's what we're trying to do, so.
Any other questions about the change allowing remote meetings? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Now we'll go to the Human Resources Committee. And the way we'll handle this this morning is we'll read the resolution into the record, and then I would ask for a motion to postpone until the next meeting of the county board. Supervisor Broglar, please.
Resolution Number 202087.
It'll be 201987.
Creating one full-time psychotherapist position in the Human Services Department. In the health and alcohol and drug outpatient clinics provide services to Jefferson County adults and children with mental illness and/or alcohol or drug issues. Jefferson County Mental Health and AOD team received 2,406 requests for service, crisis calls, and emergency detention in the first two months of 2020. This is an unprecedented number of requests, is more than twice the number of requests for the entire year in 2008, and 300 more requests than last year at this time. As a result, the consumers are waiting nearly two months for a second appointment, which increases the risk of self-harm and suicide attempts. An additional psychotherapist is needed to help manage the increasing influx of mental health needs in Jefferson County. On March 17, 2020, the Human Resource Committee reviewed the request of the Human Service Director to create one full-time psychotherapist position in the Mental Health and AODA clinic at Human Services, and recommend forwarding this corresponding resolution to the county board for consideration. Fiscal note, salary-infringed benefits for the remainder of 2020 is $56,990.63, of which $19,157 is funded through insurance revenue and other medical benefits, and $37,833.46 through tax levy. On March 10, 2020, the county board of supervisors approved a resolution authorizing year-end requests to carry over funds for fiscal year 2019 from the Human Service Department. Therefore, no additional tax levy is needed for 2020. The annual cost of the psychotherapist position is $85,293.96, and will be funded approximately 40% with insurance revenue, Medicaid, Medicare, CCS reimbursement, and WIMCR cost reconciliation, and 60% with tax levy. The county board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board, 20 of 30 votes of the member county board. I move for postponement of this resolution.
Moving in second to postpone the resolution before we proceed, is somebody who's on the phone, running on the treadmill or something that creates a beat, should we say?
No, I don't want. I hear it, don't you? I hear it.
You can hear it on your end as well?
I.
Okay.
I hear it.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
You might mention, no, no, Jimmy, you're, you might mention people when they're speaking, they need to speak closer to their microphone, because they don't know about the others, but I can barely hear them. I can't hear anything other than what Jim says.
Yeah, I understand. The system we have right now is far from perfect. When we are actually acting remotely, we will have a much more robust system, and you should be able to hear everything that's going on when you participate remotely. Thank you for your appearance this morning. I'll try to repeat anything that's said so that follow the law. We have the motion and second to postpone the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Okay, it's postponed to the next meeting. Next, we go to announcements. Mr. Waymire, do you have any announcements this morning? I'm going to bring the phone over so that those who are participating remotely can hear you.
So I guess I'll just get a quick operational update where I think we're at today, and if there's any specific questions related to that. So we continue to work with staff on how we operate. In some cases, we're looking at alternative means for how folks are working to include remote attendance where it makes sense. In the courthouse itself, we have worked with the judicial branch of postponing or finding alternative ways for court items to be taken care of. So we're doing a lot of teleconferences or telephone calls themselves for court actions that need to take place, trying to minimize the flow into the building. We have implemented for the courthouse itself that we're trying to limit, for the most part, 10 public members coming in from business at a time. Our, quite frankly, our folks coming to the building right now is fairly low, since we have adjusted many of our services. Right now, we're not providing passport service, DNR licensing, or DMV licensing as well. Our land info department has reached out to many of the surveyors and started talking about how to do a better job of remote emailing, things like that, so they don't have to come into the office. Registered deeds is doing the same thing with many of the title companies, trying to limit that impact of folks interacting in a face-to-face concept. Health and Human Services, they're working on our campuses. There's some remote attendance, remote meetings. Metro Services is trying to do the same thing with some of their clients, is looking at the interface to limit the face-to-face contact, but still trying to provide those services as we need to. We are looking at, example, parks. Our goal is to try to keep our park system open as best as we can. We'll make sure there's a venue for folks during this time, that they can get out in an open area, walk, de-stress, those kind of things. But we may minimize some operation. Example is, we're probably going to be closing the bathrooms, as an example, just because of sanitation places. We've had people steal toilet paper already, and you know, but it has happened already, so we're looking at those kind of things. I gotta put a little humor in some of the stuff that we're going on right now. Updates are happening quite frequently. I will tell you, two days ago in the afternoon, within a man or two hours, information being provided us from the state really quickly. So we're trying to update things from a staffing level to public information being put out. We're working with many partners of, as we do Facebook posts, cross-posting, like using the United Way as an example, to help get information out to folks so they understand. We have closed our dining, in-person dining facilities for ARDC. We are working on a process to have those delivered out to folks who need it as well. We're working through how we do some transportation, and it might be needed in the future for volunteers on that. We're starting to look ahead to the elections as well. We've been continuing to promote the idea of absentee ballots and those kind of things as best as possible. We'll continue to work with the clerks as we close the election, how we do it. Example is, how many more pens should we order to make sure we have room to contact the pen to pen? And literally, do we get a pen for everyone as a vote? Those kind of things to support that going forward. I have a policy in place related to staff that are traveling right now. So we have basically eliminated all county travel at this point in time, except for key essential items that must be approved by me. And folks go to any of the countries and/or states that are deemed to be community transmission, we do have a quarantine process in place for the staff upon their return. We are doing that a case-by-case basis, but in essence, that's what we're doing from a staffing level at this point going forward. We are pushing policies out almost on a daily basis. We just pushed a telecommunion policy out to staff yesterday to ensure that we're tracking how that occurs, ensure that we're providing services that we need for the public. Our biggest goal, as we're looking at this all, is how do we maintain our services to the public? Many of our services are going to be more than ever. An example is our economic support division. As we start to see more layoffs, the impact of unemployment requests. And so how do we ramp up to make sure that service is being provided? Public safety, so again, our goal is to limit meetings such as this for the time being as best as possible. We just had to do it one more time to make sure we had things in place from a legal standpoint, but try to limit that interaction now for the public, but also for the safety of our employees as well. We may look at farther restrictions to the buildings in the future, but our goal is to still be open, because we think that's important, to say that we're still open to serve the public as well. So with that being said, I'd open for any initial questions or comments that might, folks might have for me.
The deputies in the jail?
So again, you want me to do, do you brief it off?
Well, I guess, can you clarify for any?
I know the deputies are continuing on. Do we have any specific changes that we've made in the jail?
Yeah, I'll start with the chief.
Both for the sheriffs, the people.
You want to take, we've limited some access in the jail, so, good point. So Jeff?
So right now, we've done several modifications within the jail. We've gone ahead and eliminated all public access into the jail, so no professional visits, no attorney clients unless they're going through the visitation booths. We've stopped all of our services, like the ministry projects, GED, literacy council, all of those contacts have been put on hold and have been ceased at this point. The other thing that we're doing is, we're currently working with the judges, and we're looking at putting our Huber inmates out on GPS monitoring. So that's something that is being looked at right now. Other counties are doing that within the state, and it's a trend that you're seeing because of them leaving the facility and coming back to the facility. So we're working on that right now within our facility and looking at that as an option. We're taking universal safety precautions. The deputies are doing the same out on the road.
Jeff, can you talk through what you guys do with taking calls? That some of the calls are not being in person, but it's.
Yep. One of the great things is, is two years ago, we developed software in our squads, mobile CIS. And mobile CIS allowed that whenever dispatch received a call, that call was automatically transferred to the deputy's computer system within their squads. So what happens right now is when dispatch is receiving a call, the deputies are able to access that call on their MDCs inside of the squad. They're then able to go ahead and look at the level of the call, such as maybe a identity theft, or a damage to a mailbox complaint, and look at the severity of the call type, and then based on that severity and the call type, call the complainant up on the phone and do the screening of the complaint over the phone versus making a face-to-face contact. And once again, this is a trend that you're seeing across the country, across the state, by other law enforcement agencies, for handling their complaints that are of a lesser type of variety, to minimize that face-to-face interaction, and, you know, keeping consistent with cross-contamination and such. So those are things that we're also enacting.
Thank you, Chief.
I think just kind of briefly building that a little bit, one of the biggest issues we're having now, not only with our own agencies, but across the county, it's across the country, quite honestly, you know, it's just PPE, personal protection equipment specifically, gowning equipment, masks, all that stuff you're probably seeing in the news. I think the president used some authority yesterday to ramp up production of that as well. We're continuing to coordinate those efforts for emergency management up to the state as they look at coordination of how to allocate those resources as they look at what's available and reserved. So that is ongoing, as we talked to.
Just one more, just to clarify, didn't we vote, like a month or two back, that there can be remote attendance to committee meetings?
We did not take action a month back. That was a change to the county board rules for the upcoming term, which would have to be ratified by the new board on April 21st or later. This is broader. This is broader than the permanent rule change that we were looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. I just.
No, I guess a couple other things, just so everyone else all understands. We're in communication with a lot of our community partners. Well, there, an example, it's on for healthcare for some conversations yesterday. We're talking, I just had an email conversation with schools about setting up some meetings with them. We're starting some community meetings, talking to our nonprofits. They're hurting right now. Revenue's already starting to go down, and demand for services is high, so start thinking about that within your circles of who can be supportive as we look at that. We're continuing to help with all our first responder groups, but we're also looking at initiatives we need to start engaging the state on. I was on several conference calls with the executive administrative group yesterday, looking at things such as suspension of licensing requirement for medical providers who just retired. How quickly can we get them back into the system, that they're willing to come back into the system without the licensing requirements to help with the capacity issues, or things like that, so.
Supervisor Remnar?
Ben, yesterday, there was a story in the Watertown paper about the Marshville Clinic in Beaver Dam working with Dodge County to set up a drive-through testing operation. It seemed like the county was in charge of the phones that people could call, and the screening the calls, and the scheduling the testing. Is there any talk about our health department getting involved in testing?
I will say there's ongoing conversation right now between health department for healthcare and Watertown at this point.
Any other questions? Supervisor Canard, please. Supervisor Canard, please.
I guess, how are we going to handle getting the next board sworn in and a couple of board chairs selected? There seems to be a...
I'm going to be chair for life. So, so this is a topic that's come up, it's coming up quite a bit, and county government's kind of a unique beast when it comes down in this fashion. And partly, it's not just because of county government, there's the push to maintain the elections on April 7th and not postpone it. So if you look at the statutory language, focus on county board, your term doesn't continue if there's no successor. It just ends, period. So part of the reason we want to make sure things are in place is so we continue to maintain operations as a county and supporting our folks. Right now, that's part of the reason why there's a push to keep that, you know, to disprove the county for multiple reasons, to keep the election going for April 7th. Obviously, we're looking at orientation, probably being postponed. We may do some virtual stuff. We haven't, I'll be honest, I have not got to that point because of some of the other stuff going on. I think we will continue to work with legal counsel and outside agencies how to handle the organizational meeting because I think we need at least get folks sworn in and we need to establish the roles and responsibilities officers of the board because that's crucially certain constitutional requirements. So we'll continue to develop a plan. Right now, what may have to happen is we do a remote vote or we look at maybe using multiple rooms in this facility. Under the law, we are exempt for the 10-person rule. There's some gray areas of the 50-person rules and what got overruled and not in the governor's documents earlier this week. There's some clarification on that right now that needs to take place and there's a lot of things going on. So we'll communicate how we will handle it, but we have to have some level of organizational meeting, in my opinion, as we go forward, assuming the elections will take place on April 7th.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. And just to add, as I've said, if you have questions, concerns, or comments for Mr. Waymire, I ask that at least for now, you use the chair as your single point of contact. The intent is not to manage the flow of information to you. It's just so that we can use Mr. Waymire's time most efficiently. I speak with him at least daily, and any issues that you raise, I'll make sure that those are forwarded on to Mr. Waymire in the most efficient way we can. Thank you. Anything else? Any other announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a move.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. Any objection? We're adjourned, thank you.